I'd like to call to order the work session for the City Council for the City of Wildwood for Monday, August 12, 2019. Mr. Malinger, would you please call the roll?
Mayor Boland.
Here.
Councilmember Stevens.
Here.
Councilmember McCune.
Here.
Councilmember Boe.
Present.
Councilmember Bertolino.
Here.
Councilmember Dodwell.
Here.
Councilmember Remy.
Present.
Councilmember Edens.
Here.
Councilmember Brost.
Here.
Councilmember Garitano.
Present.
Councilmember Werther.
Present.
Councilmember Jordan.
Here.
Councilmember McCutcheon.
Here.
Councilmember Taylor.
Here.
Councilmember Dillard.
Here.
Councilmember Bartoni.
Here.
Okay, thank you. Under information before we get to action, I believe we have six items. Is there any question or comment about any of these items before we move to action items from any member of the council? Councilor Werther?
Thank you. Mr. Vinnich, this is with regard to the work program for the Historic Preservation Commission. I wanted to follow up and because I probably missed it as I was reading through. I know we typically do some type of certification of the city related to our historical preservation efforts. And I didn't see anything in the memo and maybe it's not, maybe you're not prepared to speak to it, but perhaps you are, and provide an update in that regard because I know we do an awful lot in that area.
Mr. Werther and members of City Council and Mr. Mayor, the City of Wildwood has been a certified local government with the State Historic Preservation Office since 2001. Each year you have to be recertified, which requires the submittal of a lot of information about your past year's efforts as a Historic Preservation Commission. Since we've been doing it so long, we just consider it as part and parcel of our process and it's not on the work program, but certainly I think it's a good idea to add it and it shows another item to be completed when it's all said and done.
Well, and it's just as part of, part of the overall program because we do all these other things in part to get and maintain that certification. So we might as well put the certification itself on the list.
That's true. Training is a key component of maintaining that certification and as you all can see on the work program, that's one of the items they identified.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Anything else from any member of the council relative to information items? All right, seeing none, moving to action items. We have two. The first is escrow, escrow matter. Joe.
With your permission, Mr. Mayor, I'll get my graphic and...
Sure.
Mr. Mayor and members of the City Council, the Department of Planning has prepared for your consideration tonight. A report relating to an escrow matter involving a two-lot subdivision that was completed in 2011. The two lots are identified on the aerial photograph that was provided as part of the department's report and now being projected on your monitors and the wall behind the dais. Mr. Foffel owned the original lot, asked to have it subdivided into two new parcels of ground and proceed forward with the potential sale of one of the two, if not both. The original parcel of ground had dedicated perpetual access via a private roadway easement and that complied with both St. Louis County's past requirements or regulations in that regard. But with the creation of a second and new lot, the city required the extension of an easement for the same purposes to it. As we found over the course of time, particularly the first 15 years of the city, despite just having two, three, or four lots involved, access is a major issue and we discovered that in the subdivisions of Stones Throw and Stones Throw Platte Two. Therefore, under the direction of City Council many years ago, the city collects an escrow for those road improvements even if it is a lot split or a two-lot subdivision. Mr. Foffel sold the lots. He was advised on numerous occasions about the escrow and the need to transfer the escrow to the new owners. The closing occurred and it did not, it was not accomplished. Therefore, the holder of escrow no longer owns the properties, but is still responsible for the escrow the city currently maintains. Mr. Foffel has asked that the escrow be released, given the timeframe now going on eight years and the fact that he has no interest in either of the two lots. The department has prepared a recommendation which concurs with his request. The department believes that the situation is unique, that even if the properties were developed, particularly the vacant one, it'd be very difficult for Mr. Foffel to have any type of role in the development of any improvements upon it. The department is able through different methods to ensure that the road would be constructed, either by holding a building permit at the start of the construction cycle to obtain an escrow or a fee, or not release an occupancy at the end of the process to ensure adequate access is provided. The easement exists, so that's not the question, it's just the construction of the roadway segment itself. The recommendation would release the approximately $10,200 and with the authorization of City Council, the Department of Planning would then collect on an individual basis or as part of the permitting process, the necessary funds or agreements or guarantees to ensure that an adequate road is ultimately constructed to the new residents. Mr. Mayor and members of the City Council, the department is respectfully requesting an action on this item. The action in, if consistent with the department's recommendation, would be to authorize the release of the escrow and to seek other means to ensure the construction of the road.
Okay. Are there any questions or comments or a motion? Ward one. Sorry, Ward six.
Ward one, I'm sorry.
Our agenda says Ward six.
Report says Ward one.
All right, Ward one.
My apologies.
Councilor Gregg Nani.
Thank you. Yeah, Joe, I did have a long talk with Kathy Arnett after I reviewed these documents that you forwarded to us. Seems fairly straightforward. My understanding here is what Joe said is that this fellow has no interest in his property anymore. He doesn't own it. He can't do anything with it because it's not his. His money, we're holding his money and that money's now going to be used by the current owners. If the current owners want to do something with it, then they would have to put up whatever escrows that would be required at the time that that would be done. So it's really pointless for us to hold on to Mr. Foffel's money. It serves no purpose in our regard, so I think we should release it to him. As a result of that, I'm going to make a motion that we release the appropriate escrow amounts to Mr. Foffel from the City of Wildwood.
Okay, we have a motion to support the department's recommendation, seconded by Councilmember Brost. Any discussion on the motion? You good, John? Did you have anything you wanted to say or you? Did you have anything you wanted to say or were you thinking you were going to vote or?
Yes.
Okay, that's fine. Councilor McCune.
So I'm in favor of the motion that's on the floor. I just have a question. Do you need further on the motion of how you're going to collect the money or is we just going to leave that discretionary to the department on, for the new owners?
I believe the way it was stated is per the department's recommendation by the mayor and I assume that was reflective of Dr., pardon me, Councilmember Gregg Nani's motion.
I'm clear.
All right, seeing no further discussion, all in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? All right, thank you, Joe.
Thank you all.
Moving next to our second item, which is a closed session, we need a motion to go into closed session, which must be a roll call vote. I would ask for a motion to that effect. May the Councilor Dodwell, seconded by Councilmember McCune. Any discussion on the motion? Seeing no discussion, roll call vote, please, Mr. Malinger.
Councilmember Stevens.
Yes.
Councilmember McCune.
Yes.
Councilmember Boe.
Yes.
Councilmember Bertolino.
Yes.
Councilmember Dodwell.
Yes.
Councilmember Remy.
Yes.
Councilmember Edens.
Yes.
Councilmember Brost.
Yes.
Councilmember Garitano.
Yes.
Councilmember Werther.
Aye.
Councilmember Jordan.
Yes.
Councilmember McCutcheon.
Yes.
Councilmember Taylor.
Yes.
Councilmember Dillard.
Yes.
Councilmember Bartoni.
Yes.
Councilmember Gregg Nani.
Yes.
Okay, so council members, we will go into closed session and we will need to return to adjourn the work session once we do that. And we'll handle that when we get back.
Did you share a contract for my council with all of the city council?
Oh, it's in the back.
It's in the packet, the updated packet.
Okay, council members, we are now back in session for continuation of the work session. We're under miscellaneous. Councilmember Werther?
Thank you. Just have a quick question. I don't know where co-city administrators may be. There's Mr. Greenwich. Which of the online agendas for the regular city council session is the correct one? There are two posted online. One that has, and I'll go through it for you just real quick. One that has the volunteer form for the proposed appointments this evening, but lacks the budgetary impact information. The other one lacks the volunteer forms for the appointments, but has the direct budgetary information listed. Merge the two are perfect, but obviously, when I get two or three questions about which is which, I have to ask the question.
Well, this particular week was kind of unusual. As you know, we're minus a city clerk, and in the position's absence, the deputy city clerk has been filling in. She had taken time off this past week, and the agenda had to be pulled together by a consortium of different individuals, including myself. And so I'll take full responsibility for the error in the two agendas. Hopefully, you were able to put the two together eventually and come up with the volunteers and et cetera.
Oh, yeah. I was able to figure it out, but obviously, the questions I received from the residents I spoke to, they were concerned and had confusion with what was going on. They just didn't know.
Like I said, we called on some people that hadn't done it in the past, and in my case, someone that hasn't done it since Lynn Green-Beldner was here, so it's been a bit of time for me.
Oh, give yourself more credit than that. I know better.
So, my apologies to all.
Thank you, Joe. Councilmember McCutcheon?
Yeah, I got an email from a resident, and I've heard the same comment before, so I don't know if we have a committee that can maybe look into so that we could offer fall leaf collection programs, chipping, and turning, I guess, waste, natural waste, into malt for our residents. Is there some way we can maybe look into that and see if we can offer the same service?
Joe?
Mr. Mayor, members of city council, that has come up before on previous occasions, and I believe the Administration Public Works Committee usually has to struggle with that question. And so I'll defer to Councilmember Garitano.
Thank you, Councilmember McCutcheon, for bringing that up. I've heard also similar. So, if the Director of Public Works has no objection, we can add that to the agenda for a meeting next month to discuss, because it would be very timely, given the fall's coming up. Is that okay with you, Rick Brown? All right?
Thank you.
Sure.
All right. Anything further? Seeing nothing further, I'd take a motion to adjourn the work session, and then we'll take a break and come back at exactly seven o'clock for the main meeting. May by Councilmember Dodwell, second by Councilmember Greg Noni. Non debatable, all in favor of the motion to adjourn, please say aye. Any opposed? Any abstentions? All right, so our work session's adjourned, and we'll start our main meeting at seven o'clock. Thank you. Okay, I'd like to call to order the meeting of the city council for the City of Wildwood for Monday, August 12, 2019. Ms. Termlinger, would you please call the roll?
Mayor Boland.
Here.
Councilmember Stevens.
Here.
Councilmember McCune.
Here.
Councilmember Boe.
Present.
Councilmember Bertolino.
Here.
Councilmember Dodwell.
Here.
Councilmember Remy.
Present.
Councilmember Edens.
Here.
Councilmember Bros.
Here.
Councilmember Garitano.
Here.
Councilmember Werther.
Present.
Councilmember Jordan.
Yes.
Councilmember McCutcheon.
Yes.
Councilmember Taylor.
Here.
Present.
Councilmember Dillard.
Here.
Councilmember Bartoni.
Here.
Councilmember Greg Noni.
Here.
Okay, thank you. And for those of you that are here this evening with us, we appreciate you being here. If you have a cellphone or other electronic device that is on, if you would please turn it to silent while we're in session, we would appreciate it. And we are honored this evening to have Boy Scout Troop 456 with us to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance. Gentlemen?
Color guard, present the color. Please join me in reciting the Pledge of Allegiance. The Pledge of Allegiance, to the flag of the United States of America, the true republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty, justice, and tolerance. Two. Color guard, post the color. Color guard, on your color. Two. Color guard, return to rank. Audience, please be seated.
Okay, thank you. Next on the agenda is the approval of minutes from the July 22, 2019 work session and regular agenda. There are no questions or comments. I would entertain a motion to approve the minutes. May by Councilmember McCutcheon, second by Councilmember Greg Noni. Any discussion? Seeing no discussion, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions?
Yes.
One abstention, Councilmember Jordan. Any other abstentions? Okay, motion carries. Minutes are approved. Next, moving to public participation. Public comment is a valuable component of our meeting. Anyone who wishes to speak must complete a speaker card and provide it to the city clerk who is seated to your left of the podium. When your name is called, please approach the podium and state your name and ward. To ensure that all who wish to speak have the opportunity to do so, there is a five-minute time limitation, and I will let you know when that time limit is reached. If you have any questions for us, please mention that during your remarks and identify the official that you would like to respond. That official will make note of it, and at the conclusion of public participation, any official who chooses to respond will have three minutes to do so as to all questions directed to that official. The official may choose to respond to your questions after tonight's meeting, and we may also post any responses on the city council page of our website. And finally, please be respectful to others in making your remarks. This means that interrupting others and using profane and abusive language are prohibited, and I want to thank everyone in advance for following these. First speaker card, please.
Sidney Tom Smith.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen of the council, and Mr. Mayor. Thank you for allowing me the time to speak. I find this opportunity to speak very timely as a resolution, as Resolution 2019-29 is on the agenda for the evening. As you may or may not be aware, the reason I'm speaking to the council tonight is because I have filed two Code of Ethics and one charter violation complaints which are pending against Councilman Steve Taylor, and I'm in a quandary over what the procedure, proper procedure is with the Board of Ethics. On July 8, 2019, I spoke at the city council meeting and advised that I would be filing a Code of Ethics complaint against Councilman Taylor. On July 9, 2019, I hand-delivered my complaint to the deputy city clerk. I filed my complaint on the Board of Ethics complaint form as required. In addition, I filed a second Code of Ethics complaint on July 29, 2019. According to the cover sheet of the Board of Ethics, this document here, the complaint is to be circulated to all members of the Board of Ethics within five days of the receipt of the complaint by the city clerk. The complaint was formally logged on July 9, 2019, which would require the complaint to be distributed to all Board of Ethics members on or before July 15 of 2019. According to my documentation, this was not done, and per the deputy city clerk, has most likely not been done as yet. Copies of the complaint instead were sent to Tim Engelmeier, John Young, Steve Cross, Joe Vunich, Jim Boland, not to the members of the Board of Ethics as called out in the complaint form cover sheet. When I inquired as to the distribution of the complaint, I was told by the deputy city clerk that, quote unquote, "At this time, both of your complaints have been submitted to the chair." We are currently working to set up a meeting with the entire board to discuss the complaints. Once the date is finalized, we will reach out to all of the board members with the meeting date and complaints in preparation for the meeting consistent with past practices. This is fundamentally flawed. It's wrong. It goes directly against this document that is the Board of Ethics form. In addition, the instructions on the Board of Ethics complaint form under paragraph four requires that, again, quote unquote, "The chair will thereafter schedule a meeting of the Ethics Board. Said meeting shall be set within 30 days and be posted in the same manner as all other city-related meetings." The complaint was filed on July 9, and therefore, the scheduled meeting should have taken place on or before August 8. Councilmember Greg Noni, as my Ward 1 councilman, I have a question for you that I'd like you to answer this evening. Can you tell me with some certainty when these complaints will be acknowledged and dealt with? One last item, in the process of reviewing various documents, documentation for my complaints, I noticed that under Section 125-07-0 and 125-08-0, that all members of the Board of Ethics are to file annually a financial disclosure form. On August 1, 2019, when I requested copies of these forms, followed On August 1, 2019, when I requested copies of these forms, followed up on August 6, 2019, I was advised that, quote-unquote, "There are no public records responsive to this request." In conclusion, I would like to know who instructed the deputy city clerk to handle the Code of Ethics complaints in the manner in which they have been handled. I would like to see the Board of Ethics follow and comply with its own rules, that the entire Board of Ethics be required to undergo intensive training as to the nature and scope of their position, and be required to take an oath of office to sit on the Board of Ethics. This is one of the most important boards outside of this group in this city. And lastly, that the current chair of the Board of Ethics be relieved from her duties for failure to comply with the board's own rules. In addition, Mr. Cross sent me a note that he would look into the financial disclosure forms, and I have yet to hear back from him. Thank you very much for your time. I hope you'll deal with this in the appropriate manner.
Thank you. Next speaker card, please.
Joy Wilcox.
Good evening. I'm here. I'm Joy Wilcox, 17345 Manchester Road, 63038. And I'm here to talk about the Pond Sewer Project. This was supposed to be on the agenda at the Administration and Public Works meeting last week, but that was canceled. And I do want to say that it was very kind to hear from Councilmember Garitano and Rick Brown to receive a phone call that the meeting was canceled at the last minute. That was appreciated, and I then made a couple more calls to people that were going to come. So why I'm here tonight is to talk about certain things that I think that we, as property owners, have not received from the city, certain things that are important. And the first one is that the night of the meeting in January, you walked in, you were greeted by Joe, handed a packet of papers, and then you looked at a large poster board that had everyone's acreage on it. And mine was pointed out to me, and I immediately said, "That amount is incorrect. It was over my one acre." So I also noted that one of my neighbors, that theirs was wrong too. And I mentioned that. And I was told that, "No, these figures came from the St. Louis County real estate website." So, one snowy day, I didn't have anything much to do, and I went over them, and they were incorrect. Now, the new list has been sent out, and there are still incorrect acreage amounts on there. There are nine that are underestimated, six that are overestimated, three are unknown, the county doesn't have anything, and eight that are correct. Next, the letter that was sent was vague to me, and I received two calls the next day after receipt of the letter, and both the calls were basically the same thing. Didn't tell us much, it was vague. At the meeting, there's going to be a vote for the annexation of the properties west of Pond Road. Now, I got the information from MSD. And there's a procedure for this, and I believe that anyone that has to participate in this should see these documents. It's Article 2, District and Bounds and Extensions from MSD. Next, there's no explanation of the NID, other than on the chart with the amount of ground it gives your amount, I call it a contribution. Anyway, the NID is complicated. And once again, I looked that up. That is, I pulled the statute, it's Missouri Chapter 67, Section 67.455, Neighborhood Improvement District State, that this financing is, quote, "A complete alternative to all other methods provided by law or charter." My question is, isn't there any other way? Sale of municipal bonds, placing this within the city budget? I would like a copy, along with Article 2 from MSD, a copy of Missouri Chapter 67, 453 to 475, be sent to each of the property owners before the meeting. We deserve to know exactly what we're getting into. There's things in this explanation that I think most people would be shocked to find out. Not only with the NID are we required to pay the cost of the pipe to run it to the middle school, we're also on the hook for finance costs and up to a 25% overage cost. This is a 1.2 million project. So I'd like for that to be included. And also, I've had some estimates done for the work into my building. I have a building and a home on my property, and really, it's awful. That's all I can say. I haven't slept thinking about this. In the initial paperwork, there was an estimate said from Home Advisor, $7,000. The contractors that I had at my house laughed when I told them 7,000. Many of us will have to install pumps to carry the waste to the street. Pumps are expensive. I was told they start at about 20,000. Some may require a lift station. Several property owners will be forced to join two NIDS because they own property along Manchester Road and adjoining properties which are not included in this new plan.
Ms. Wilcox, I'm sorry, how much more do you have?
About two minutes, maybe.
Can you make it a minute?
Uh, maybe.
Keep it even, okay?
Okay, maybe. They're forced to join two NIDS because we've changed the plan. The next problem is the age of the property owners out there. I know of one couple that's under 60. The rest are 60 and over, and several are over 80. It's a huge financial burden. The school's operating at 25% of its capacity. The addition is not new classrooms, but a multipurpose room. The DNR has programs to regulate their systems. All three middle schools in the city of Wildwood are on sewage treatment systems. Are the neighbors going to have to put these in for the school? I'm wondering what's next. Come to us to pave the roads? So what I would like too, at the next meeting, is a formal explanation of the plan. Up on some big board, whatever, a question-and-answer period from the audience so that after they've received this paperwork, from the MSD paperwork and the statute about the NID, that all questions are asked and answered. And then last, after all the questions are asked and answered, a vote on the annexation. And that's not just a simple 50%. There's another formula to that. So I'd like the acreage amounts corrected. I'd like Article 2 MSD information about the annexation and voting procedures sent to all the affected residents, Missouri Statute 67, and that's Section 453 to 475, and a suggestion in the paperwork sent to the affected owners that they get an estimate of the cost. I think that we need to know and look at all the paperwork before we make such a financial decision. Thank you.
Thank you.
And thank you for the extra time.
No problem. Next speaker card, please.
Teresa Clark.
Good evening. Thank you for allowing me to come and talk to you tonight. I wanted to talk to you about closed captioning in the council meetings. I am Teresa Clark, and I am a mother of two hearing children and one deaf child. They're all grown now. I'm a retired nurse, a retired chemist, a retired automotive engineer, and a retired ASL interpreter, American Sign Language interpreter. Because I'm the most likely to retire again person. But I am from Ward 1, and I live at 18533 Sassafras Point. Closed captioning helps almost everyone. All of us in this room could benefit from closed captioning. In America, 20% of the people are deaf or hard of hearing, have a hearing loss of some sort. In Missouri, 10%. That means 600,000 people in the state of Missouri are deaf or hard of hearing. There's no visible signs to know if someone is deaf or not. You can't look at someone and say, "Oh, you look deaf," unless maybe they have a hearing aid or a cochlear implant. My son, Marcus, has gone around so many times as he's growing up, and people ask him, ask me, "Well, is he just not educated? Or maybe he's intoxicated? Or maybe he's Chinese adopted?" So they think maybe he's foreign, he has a foreign language. And communication between people should not have, shouldn't have to come into the council meeting and announce your disability to be able to communicate in this meeting. The information in here is important to all of us. We should be inclusive with all of the citizens of the city instead of just the hearing, like Tim Schreiber of Special Olympics says, "The inclusion revolution is what we're in right now." There's two types of captioning. There's open caption and closed caption. Open caption, all of the captions are burned into the video, the film, the actual shown, viewed image. So you can't turn that off. But there's closed caption that we have now that we can turn on and off. And we also have subtitles, but those are usually used for translating from one language to another language. FCC has rules about these. You have to have accuracy, you have to have synchrony, you have to have it complete from beginning to end, not just little bits of it. And you also have to have it placed on the screen in appropriate place so it doesn't cover so much of the area. Back in 1973 was really a beginning with closed captioning. In the Rehabilitation Act of 1973, Section 508 required captions and transcription of all federal agencies and organizations. In Section 504 of that act, and in Title 2 of the American Disability Act, discrimination is to be prevented in all of the K through 12 schools. Moving on through the timeline up to 1991, Americans with Disabilities Act was established fully by the Bush administration and Robert DeVilla, who was the president of Gallaudet University and was a president at one time, excuse me, of National Technical Institute of the Deaf in New York. They established this American Disability Act to prohibit discrimination against disabled people. And this applied, as it was updated, to state and local government. Moving on forward to 2010, and I'm skipping through a lot of steps. The 21st Century Communication and Video Accessibility Act of 2010 was established. And this provided the rules of the FCC for closed caption on Internet and technical devices, though it moved from just videos to the electronic.
Ms. Clark, my apology. How much more do you have, do you think, in terms of time?
I'm going to skip through, and I'm going to go right to the advantages.
Okay, thank you.
Reasons for closed caption is not just for deaf and hard of hearing. Of course, that's number one, because they don't have that option of just coming in and sitting and listening to what's going on, or even on the live stream. Also, audiences on live stream are here. Sometimes you're in a, you're having another meeting going on, or someone else is talking to you, and if you've got that on the screen, it helps you to follow along. English as second language learners can benefit from this, because if they don't know the language, you can read it, and it's easier to understand, plus it improves your language comprehension. It improves my language comprehension of something like this. I come in and I listen about watersheds and all of these things that are told, that you talk about. Maybe I don't know that jargon at all, but if I see it up there, I know what you have said, for sure. And I could go home and look it up. Visual learners can maintain concentration better if it's on the board. Also, low volumes. Maybe I have good hearing, but if it's not at a volume loud enough, I won't be able to hear it. Audio equipment failures. People mumble, or more than one person talking at a time. I've got one more. Remember that we use multiple senses will help us to remember things so much better. So if I hear it and I see it, I can remember what you say better.
Thank you. Next speaker card, please.
Charlie Stance.
Saint Ange. Charlie Saint Ange.
It's been worse, trust me. Good evening, council. Thank you very much for the opportunity to be able to come here this evening and speak with you all. Mine will be real quick. I just wanted to humbly come before you on behalf of St. Paul's Lutheran Church, which I'm a member of and elder of and sit on the council of, and ask that you consider Bill 2491 this evening, and I beg, if we can, to try and obtain a second reading. We are in the process of trying to fix this septic sewage problem that we've got. We've complied with everything that the city of Wildwood is asking us to comply with, and we are just to the point where we want to make it right, get it well, and move on. So with that being said, I ask for two readings this evening, if at all possible. We have, the engineering is being worked on and going to be in place, and we're ready to go. We're ready to push forward. Thank you very much for your time, and thank you for the opportunity to come before you on this.
Thank you. Next speaker card, please.
Dave Williams.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of council. Dave Williams, Board of Public Safety, and I live in Ward 7. I've got a slide to get up on the screen here. The reason I'm here tonight is to talk about our soon-to-be-developed deer management program. I serve on the Board of Public Safety, and one of the things that we are working on is coming up with a comprehensive deer management program. My reason for being here is just to give you an update tonight of where we're at. We've got plenty of work left to do, but as with any large program like this, it takes a little while for it to move through all the various committees, subcommittees. And in order to maintain as much traction and get as much progress as we can, I wanted to kind of highlight some things that we can do now in order to make this program successful as soon as possible. And in terms of where are we with this, and in terms of, you know, in deference to the lady who just spoke before me, in terms of putting something on the board, you know, people can see this and they can also read it. This is going to be a multi-year effort requiring consistent cooperation from all the parties involved. In talking with some of our neighboring municipalities, the city of town and country is just now getting to the point where they have their deer population under control. But that has been a consistent, very expensive effort over a 10-year period. Our city's a little bit different, and every city's going to be a little bit different. But, you know, to cut to the chase, these are the things that we can do in the meantime while we're in the process of formulating our final plan. Number one, don't feed the deer. This is a consistent message that we need to get out to everybody. It's a violation of existing law in the state of Missouri. Again, we're not going to have, you know, people jumping out of trees with handcuffs to come after people, but this is a violation of law. We can't do this. The reasons are, deer lose their natural fear of human beings, and they can become dependent upon humans as a food source. And if people are not out there in February, when we're talking single digits, the deer are going to freeze to death. And I've seen that, and it's not a pretty sight. Number two, one of the things that we can do in this interim period is we can start to survey the residents in the city to, among other things, determine what residents already know about our city's deer problem, to possibly quiz and/or educate people about hunting requirements and regulations within the city. And we can get opinions from people about how do you feel about residential hunting, about bow hunting, different types of other, you know, methods for getting this population more under more under control. Lastly, what we can do is work with homeowner associations within the city, and I would look to council members where we have higher-than-expected numbers of deer. We have data that we've collected with, in one of our partners, our main partner is the Missouri Department of Conservation. We have a lot of really good data from them about where we have deer. And we know how many we should have, but the data that we have is about a year old, and we're not doing anything to get those numbers down. So we need to get in front of this, we need to be aggressive, and we're, you know, we need to get everybody on board. And like I said, it's going to take a while for us to get there, but there's some things we can do in the interim. So I would ask the council members to let your homeowner associations, let your constituents know that we're going to be reaching out to them and we're going to be looking for their cooperation. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker card, please.
Joan Harwood.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor. Yes, I live at Lake Chesterfield, and went there a few years ago. Beautiful lake. And now it looks awful, and they're calling it a watershed, and it's depressing. So I'm speaking for the ones who live out there at the condo that's trying to say that we would like it fixed. And I know engineers have gone out there and they were paid to look around and whatever, and then they stopped the water from coming in. We had a lot of water when there was some water. And because they stopped it from coming in or going out, I don't know, it just, you know, there's nothing there now but weeds. And so we were hoping that something nice could be done. And that's all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker card, please.
That was the last one.
Okay. Councilor Greg Noni, did you want to respond to the question that was presented to you from Mr. Smith, I believe, one of the public speakers?
Yeah, I would like very much to respond. I've been made aware of this timeline that Mr. Smith has presented to all of you tonight, and I must say I'm a bit dismayed. In fact, this is very timely, because, Mr. Mayor, you have an appointment coming up tonight to the Board of Ethics. And I think that we need to really discuss what's going on with the Board of Ethics. I think the Board of Ethics is showing itself to not be very functional at this present time. And what's really even is more concerning is that this body, which is responsible for overseeing these various boards and commissions, has apparently not written close heard on the process that's supposed to take place when a complaint has been filed. To answer Mr. Smith's direct question, I have no idea when their complaint's going to be heard, because apparently I have no more control over that than you do. But at this juncture, I would suggest, Mr. Mayor, that since you do have an appointment coming up, there should be some discussion. And if it's not out of order, I would very much like to make a motion that a hearing on this Board of Ethics complaint be held fairly soon to respond to the 30, we're well beyond the 30-day period. But I think we need to respond to this soon now in order to be in compliance with the request that was made by a citizen. This is a legitimate request. This is not something that, I think, needs to be just discarded. So I'm hoping that maybe you all will see your way clear to help me here, to bring the Board of Ethics back into alignment, make sure that things are done correctly, that we file the proper reports by all the members of the Board of Ethics that we're responsible for getting filed. I know that you all file reports every year, so do I, so does the P and Z. I think the Board of Ethics has to do the same. I noticed that there's this resolution. I don't know that this resolution resolves that whole issue tonight, but this is a timely discussion this evening. So, Mr. Smith, I'm hoping that we'll get some agreement to get your complaints heard as soon as possible.
So, point of information, you, I believe you were looking at an earlier draft of the agenda. There is no Board of Ethics appointment on the agenda for this evening.
I apologize. I was looking at an earlier.
It's okay. Councilor Werther.
I think Councilmember Dr. Greg Noni made a motion, but there was no timeframe associated with the motion.
Okay, Councilor Werther, this is, this is just a...
I'm trying to find out if I'm going to second the motion.
Councilmember Werther, if you'll just bear with me a moment, please. Under the rule adopted by this council, this is a time for any council member or other city official to respond to someone who raised a question, if they want to do it, in public participation. It is not a time to debate and make motions. That can come at the end of the meeting under miscellaneous.
So you're ruling his motion out of order?
I didn't actually hear a motion from him. That was going to be what I was going to ask him next.
I thought I heard you say motion.
But I was going to get you first, so.
May I clarify? I said that I would like to make a motion. I mentioned that I didn't know what the correct order was. Perhaps this is not the right time, but it's got to be done tonight before we leave this chamber. And whether it's at the end of the meeting, I don't care. I'll leave that to the chair to control. But we're not leaving without a motion on a hearing by the Board of Ethics.
So we'll put it under miscellaneous, which is where, under the rules of the council relating to public participation, it would go. And obviously, we would want the city attorney to comment at that point. Okay, I believe that that, and thank you, Councilor Greg Noni. I believe that was the only question. Direct anyone else want to answer anything else? All right. Moving to mayor announcements and appointments. Under announcements, provided you with a memo from a few days ago, you may recall, councilmembers, in my August 2, 2019 mayor's report that I do to you every Friday, I mentioned that for some time we had been discussing closed captioning of our meetings, and that research has taken some time to complete, and it has finally been completed. And so my plan was for us to move forward with that for the benefit of those that are not able to hear or interpret, read and so forth, as well as others. And in response to that, Councilor Stevens had some questions relative to cost and so forth, so decided the best thing would be to put it on the agenda. Councilor Stevens, at this point, do you want to ask any questions or say anything relative to it?
No, I was just curious if it was over $10,000 for the year, if it needed council approval. That was my only question. It could have been answered through email, but I was just...
Okay, so I didn't see that as your question. I know you raised a question about cost, but the answer is, at this point, I'm not sure we know what the cost is. I mean, I think we know the top end of it, which I mentioned in the memo, which would be if we do every meeting consistently, it would be $1,300 monthly. But I think at this juncture, it's not clear that we would be doing that, and Mr. Cross can further elaborate. That notwithstanding, if you would feel more comfortable, we can have a motion if someone wants to make it relative to closed captioning, if the council wants to do it. Councilor Remy?
I'll make a motion for closed captioning if I have a question related to this as well.
Second, by Councilor Bertolino. So that's a motion on the floor. Councilmember Stevens.
Also, just report from, you know, a resident watching on live stream, the live stream is off tonight, too. So it might even be more confusing, because like when Mr. Saint Ange was speaking, Ms. Clark was still on the screen. And so if we're going to offer closed caption, it's going to be very confusing until we get the closed, until we get the live stream figured out first.
Actually, they will take, there is a delay oftentimes with the live stream consistently. And secondly, relative to the closed captioning, since it will not be done live, it will be done after the speaker has spoken, that will, I believe, not be an issue. Is that correct, Mr. Cross?
The closed captioning, as it is envisioned right now, would actually be as the speaker is speaking. So, but there are some bugs to work out. We're working with the vendor and working out different issues at the current time.
Councilor Remy?
Can I just speak on the motion and just ask a question?
Sure.
So first and foremost, obviously, I support the motion that I just made. I think this is an important thing that we need to actually do in 2019 to engage our citizens that would benefit from this. Would I be able to ask Ms. Clark a question? Who eloquently discussed this, but I had a question about potentially something. I'm not allowed to.
Unfortunately, at this juncture, we're not.
Okay. And the reason, so I won't ask her the question, but one other consideration in addition to closed captioning, so that we can engage members of the community in person, would be, do we think that there also would be the opportunity to have a live signer here at the meetings, so that they could be present folks and they could actually interact in real time as well?
So as chair, I'll give you a point of information. We did look at that. It was actually, from my standpoint, and not being an expert on those things, something that I thought we at least might want to do in tandem with this, or maybe in lieu of that. The cost for it is significant. So if you would like to have that looked at, we could have that cost summarized and put on the next work session agenda. If the council would like to do it, certainly can do it, just so you know that it was quite expensive for that.
I'm sure it is. I think it's an important thing to engage our community regardless of this cost, but also we could also explore other opportunities also within the community where folks may be of interest to come and participate and actually sign here as well.
The other thing I would say, too, is that, just for your information, when we do have a request, I know at one of the mayor coffees, we had a request for someone who was attending that was deaf, and we do provide, in that instance, an interpreter. And I'm not, certainly not speaking against doing it. I just wanted you to know, for your information, that it was more expensive than what you see before you this evening. Councilor Taylor?
I was going to ask the same question regarding a live signer.
Okay.
But I also wanted to ask Mr. Young, does this help us become more compliant with ADA? Or is closed captioning an issue right now for us?
Not necessarily the ADA, but there are other laws applicable pertaining to closed captioning. And obviously, you know, we're working to maintain compliance with all laws. But we do have reasonable accommodation that the city does provide consistent with the ADA and always has.
Okay, but this, this would, I think, regardless of, it's not a compliance issue. If it's not a compliance issue, I would think this is something that we very much should do for our residents, and I'm wholeheartedly in support of it.
Councilor Bertolino?
Yeah, Steve, quick question for you. When you investigated this, does the, does the audience, does the participant watching live stream have the option of toggling on if you were to live stream and shutting it off? Or is it going to be, it's not an option. It's going to be there. You can't take it off your screen if you're watching it live stream.
You're correct, that it would be on at all times. So it's either on or off. Yes, sir.
Okay, seeing no further questions or comments, we have a motion to proceed with closed captioning our public meetings. All in favor, please say aye. Any opposed? Any abstentions? Motion carries. Thank you. Okay, next two appointments, we have two. The first is Ms. Carol Holt House to the Erosion Task Force as the citizen representative from Ward Four. Don't believe she is here with us this evening. She was not able to be here. Is that correct, Councilor Dodwell? She replaces former member Lisa Taylor, who resigned in the last couple of weeks. So if there are no questions, I would entertain a motion for her approval, made by Councilmember Dodwell, seconded by Councilor Stevens. Any discussion? Councilor McKeon?
Was there an email about her resignation that we missed on council? Or I missed?
There was an email sent by her, you're meaning Ms. Taylor. There was an email sent by her to me. It was not sent to the full council. As a matter of course, I don't usually send every email of that nature to the council. But if you want to see it, we can get it to you. I know we sent it to Councilor Werther, because he asked for it.
So I think, if I can, in the future of any resignation, that the entire committee is aware, so we bring new people. This was kind of a, I had to ask around of why she was coming forward, because I was unaware of her resignation. So if we're voting in and voting out, can we just get that courtesy?
Well, that's in the memo.
I understand that now, but before the meeting or before the agenda's posted, if somebody resigns, can you please just send out an email from their resignation to the rest of the council? Is what I'm asking. You said you didn't feel it was necessary that the council would receive her resignation. I'm just asking, can you forward those?
I'll take that into, I appreciate your question.
I'm asking your consideration.
Okay, thank you. Councilor Dodwell, I'm sorry, Councilor Werther.
Thank you. There's also another instance where resignation was offered and council was not made aware as in whole. I found out about it just yesterday evening through some back channels, when in fact, really, the entire council should be made aware that our city marshal has resigned. Now, the fact of the matter is, the timeliness of notification is one thing. Now, my understanding is that the city, former city marshal gave notice about a week or so ago, but council wasn't told of it. Fact of the matter is, I think, in even the case with the Erosion Task Force, it was weeks after the fact, when suddenly Ms. Holt House's volunteer form showed up, and the question is, okay, so what happened? Now, we used to do this differently here. We used to actually share these pieces of information, because council members, we all have a responsibility to help make sure we find adequate, qualified individuals, residents, to fulfill these positions. And if we don't have the information that positions have opened up, it's impossible for us to do our job.
So two points of information. First of all, the city marshal's resignation is not anywhere near effective at this point. Number one. Number two, appointments start in the office of the mayor. The council approves them with the exception of the city administrator. So while I appreciate your willingness to provide names, the names will be considered. If you'd like to provide any, when that time comes, I'd be happy to consider them.
I realize you have a particular desire to control information. That's fine. The residents need to understand that, council needs to understand it. Council should be demanding knowledge and information so it can take action, provide information, provide counsel. That's part of our job and responsibility. You don't want that, that's fine.
There are also considerations relative to people who resign that need to be taken into account. Councilmember Dodwell?
As far as the Ward Four committee member that was brought forward, that individual was on vacation and unreachable by me or by Steve Cross prior to last week. So therefore, I did not get a final confirmation from her until either the Friday before this past Friday or on Monday, at which point she completed her registration as a volunteer. And I think within 24 to 48 hours, that volunteer form went out to all of the council members indicating that she wanted to be on this particular committee. So since we're focused on this particular nomination, I would ask that we keep the focus to this nomination and that we vote positively for Carol. She does live, her property backs right up to Cox Creek and Timber Ridge Estates, and so I think we have a qualified candidate for this particular role. And she is looking forward to participating on the committee as a representative of residents impacted by Cox Creek erosion.
Thank you. Any further questions or comments relative to the nominee, the issue on the floor? All right, so we have a motion in second. Seeing no further discussion, all in favor of the motion that the appointment be approved, please say aye. Any opposed? Any abstentions? The motion carries. Next of the two, Ms. Rhonda Lozier filling a position on our architectural review board. And as you may know, these positions are actually, in my opinion, some of the most difficult to fill, because our code requires that members be Wildwood residents, of course, that are licensed architects. So Rhonda is just, Ms. Lozier is just recently licensed, and I've been working with her over the last couple of months, waiting for that, so that I could present this to you this evening. You have her background information, and again, she's unfortunately unable to be here this evening. If there are no questions, I would entertain a motion to approve. Again, Ward One, Councilor Greg Noni.
Yeah, I just like to comment, Rhonda was a councilperson for a number of years from Ward One. I know her quite well. She's been around here quite a while. I think she'd be a good person for this position. I was unaware that she had become a licensed architect recently, but that's a wonderful thing for us. So I would recommend her, and I will move that she be nominated to the position.
Okay, so we have a motion and from Councilor Greg Noni, seconded by Councilmember Bros, to approve the appointment of Ms. Lozier to the ARB. Thank you for that. Any discussion on the motion? Seeing no discussion, all in favor of the motion, please say aye. Any opposed? Any abstentions? All right, motion carries. All right, moving into legislation, and one thing I just want to say, for information to our scouts that are still with us this evening, thank you for being here. And what's going to happen now is we're going to go through what we call bills and legislation, and they require two readings. And the reason for that is so that the public has the opportunity to know what we do here in this building. Tonight, you're going to have some that have already been through one reading and others that are for a first reading. And in some instances, the council may decide by a supermajority, two-thirds vote, as may happen tonight, to do both readings in one night. So just wanted you to be aware of that, because what you're going to see going forward for the next few minutes, that's what that's about and why that happens. All right, moving into second readings, bills that have already been read. Bill 2483 is before the council for second reading for final passage, and it concerns all wards. Is there a motion for the second reading of the bill? Is there a motion for the second reading of the bill? Made by Councilmember Dodwell, seconded by Councilmember Bertolino. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Ms. Sternlinger, please read Bill 2483.
Bill 2483, in ordinance by the City Council of the City of Wildwood, Missouri, authorizing the co-interim city administrators to execute and issue a purchase order for certain security items intended for installation at City Hall, which relate to occupant safety through the use of Proposition P sales tax funds.
Thank you. Joe, do you have anything you'd like to mention relative to this bill?
No, Mr. Mayor, but the department is available to answer any questions and respond to comments.
Okay, do you have, any member of the council have any questions for Joe or any comments relative to Bill 2483? Right, seeing none, Ms. Sternlinger, please call the roll for final passage of Bill 2483.
Councilmember Stevens?
Yes.
Councilmember McKeon?
Yes.
Councilmember Boe?
Yes.
Councilmember Bertolino?
Yes.
Councilmember Dodwell?
Yes.
Councilmember Remy?
Yes.
Councilmember Edens?
Yes.
Councilmember Brost?
Yes.
Councilmember Garitano?
Aye.
Councilmember Werther?
Aye.
Councilmember Jordan?
Yes.
Councilmember McCutcheon?
Yes.
Councilmember Dillard?
Yes.
Councilmember Bartoni?
Yes.
Councilmember Greg Noni?
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay, bill passes. Moving next to Bill 2484, it is also before the council for final passage, and it concerns Ward One. Is there a motion for the second reading of the bill? Made by Councilmember Greg Noni, seconded by Councilmember Brost. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Ms. Sternlinger, please read Bill 2484.
Bill 2484, in ordinance authorizing the mayor of the City of Wildwood, Missouri to execute a consultant services agreement on behalf of the City of Wildwood with SC Engineering LLC, doing business as Cochran, for the design of a small bridge and box culvert replacements on Bouquet Road and Wild Horse Creek Road within the City of Wildwood.
Thank you. Rick, do you have anything to add to the information the council's been provided relative to Bill 2484?
I have nothing further, Mayor, but I'm available for any questions or comments from the council.
Counselor Greg Noni?
Yes, Rick, I assume we're still going to meet with residents about the design issues, you know, that's pending out there. I hope that we're going to be able to convince people this is worth doing.
Yes, in response to your question, we will be glad to meet with the property owners, and we are certainly open to that whenever it would be helpful. And I know that you have a concern relative to the project we've already started, and we still intend to meet with that property owner.
Well, you know, I made this warning some time back, that folks out there don't, they take their road seriously, so I think we need to listen to them.
Understood, and it does tend to pay off if we listen upfront.
All right, thanks a lot.
Thank you. Any other questions or discussion on the bill? Seeing none, Ms. Sternlinger, please call the roll for final passage of Bill 2484.
Councilmember McKeon?
Yes.
Councilmember Boe?
Yes.
Councilmember Bertolino?
Yes.
Councilmember Dodwell?
Yes.
Councilmember Remy?
Yes.
Councilmember Edens?
Yes.
Councilmember Brost?
Yes.
Councilmember Garitano?
Yes.
Councilmember Werther?
Aye.
Councilmember Jordan?
Yes.
Councilmember McCutcheon?
Yes.
Councilmember Taylor?
Yes.
Councilmember Dillard?
Yes.
Councilmember Bartoni?
Yes.
Councilmember Greg Noni?
Yes.
Councilmember Stevens?
Yes.
Okay, thank you, bill passes. Finally, second of the second readings, moving to Bill 2485. It is before the council for final passage, and it concerns all wards. Is there a motion for the second reading of the bill? Made by Councilmember Dodwell, seconded by Councilmember Garitano. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Ms. Sternlinger, please read Bill 2485.
Bill 2485, in ordinance of the City of Wildwood, Missouri, authorizing an agreement with the Missouri Office of State Courts Administrator for implementation of the ShowMe Courts automation software and imposing a court automation surcharge of $7 on municipal cases in order to assist in payment thereof and amending the municipal code relating thereto.
City Attorney Young, do you have anything you want to mention relative to this that the council has not already been provided?
I have nothing to add, but I'm available for questions.
Okay. Any questions for the city attorney? All right, seeing none, Ms. Sternlinger, please call the roll for final passage of Bill 2485.
Councilmember Boe?
Yes.
Councilmember Bertolino?
Yes.
Councilmember Dodwell?
Yes.
Councilmember Remy?
Yes.
Councilmember Edens?
Yes.
Councilmember Brost?
Yes.
Councilmember Garitano?
Yes.
Councilmember Werther?
Aye.
Councilmember Jordan?
Yes.
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 Councilmember Dillard?
Yes.
Councilmember Bartoni?
Yes.
Councilmember Greg Noni?
Yes.
Councilmember Stevens?
Yes.
Councilmember McKeon?
Yes.
Okay, bill passes. Moving next to Bill 2486, is before the council for first readings, and it concerns all wards. Is there a motion for the first reading of the bill? Made by Councilmember Dodwell, signed by Councilmember Garitano. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Ms. Sternlinger, please read Bill 2486.
Bill 2486, in ordinance appointing Samuel L. Ansem to the Office of City Administrator, establishing the compensation of the city administrator and authorizing the mayor to execute an employment agreement.
Thank you. Counselor Dodwell, do you want to mention anything relative to this bill?
Well, I'd like to first say thank you very much to the committee members who participated in going through this search. It was an arduous process for everybody, and I think we've come to a very good candidate that has a great deal of experience, for those of you in the public. Sam is, has left the City of Joplin, and he became the city administrator pretty shortly after or before the tornado hit, and so has been very much involved with the recovery of that particular community. And I feel very honored to have him be our city administrator. If he didn't see a tornado physically come through, just watching a council meeting will show him a tornado or two at times that he'll have to deal with. But I would request that we have a second reading this evening so that we can move forward with getting him on board.
Okay. And before I ask for a motion to that, I just want to take a moment of privilege from the chair and just say to you, Councilmember Dodwell, thank you for a very well-run process, and just watching it unfold and so forth, just a tremendous job.
You're welcome.
And to the other members of the-
The whole team did a good job.
And to the other members of the committee, I agree. All right. Is there a motion for, made by Counselor Taylor, seconded by Counselor Werther, for second reading? This will take a two-thirds vote. We'll do it by voice vote, and if there's no opposition, we will, if there's any opposition, it looks like we can't tell, if it passes, we'll do a roll call or a show of hands. All in favor of the motion for second reading, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? All right, seeing none, the motion for second reading passes. Ms. Ansem, would you please stand up so everyone knows who-
So that everybody knows who the administrator will be effective Wednesday. Appreciate you coming forward, Sam, I really do.
Assuming we have the roll call vote on second.
Yeah.
That's all right. You get to do that, having gone through all this process and taking care of all those things. Okay, Ms. Sternlinger, would you please read Bill 2486?
Bill 2486, in ordinance appointing Samuel L. Ansem to the Office of City Administrator, establishing the compensation of the city administrator and authorizing the mayor to execute an employment agreement.
Okay. Anything further you want to add, Counselor Dodwell?
Let's just vote.
All right. Seeing no further discussion, Ms. Sternlinger, please call the roll of the council for the final passage of Bill 2486.
Councilmember Bertolino?
Yes.
Councilmember Dodwell?
Yes.
Councilmember Remy?
Yes.
Councilmember Edens?
Yes.
Councilmember Brost?
Yes.
Councilmember Garitano?
Yes.
Councilmember Werther?
Aye.
Councilmember Jordan?
Yes.
Councilmember McCutcheon?
Yes.
Councilmember Taylor?
Yes.
Councilmember Dillard?
Yes.
Councilmember Bartoni?
Yes.
Councilmember Greg Noni?
Yes.
Councilmember Stevens?
Yes.
Councilmember McKeon?
Yes.
Councilmember Boe?
Yes.
Okay, bill passes, and Mr. Ansem, congratulations.
Point of order, please, Mr. Mayor. Point of order.
What is your point of order?
Given the last time we went through trying to appoint co-city administrators and the difficulties with getting the bill that was approved by council passed, I need to ask the mayor if he's going to sign this bill so Mr. Ansem can begin on Wednesday.
Our ordinance requires the mayor to approve any recommendation from the council for the city administrator, and so by definition, he wouldn't be here tonight as a bill if I hadn't already approved it. So the answer is yes. Moving to Bill 2487, it is before the council also for first reading, and it concerns all wards. Is there a motion for the first reading of the bill? Made by Councilmember Jordan, seconded by Councilmember McKeon. Any opposed? I'm sorry, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions?
I'm sorry, I got my hand for opposition.
Okay, we have one opposition, Counselor Werther.
I'll be happy to explain.
Ms. Sternlinger, would you please read Bill 2487?
Bill 2487, in ordinance appointing Jessica Sternlinger to the Office of City Clerk for the City of Wildwood, Missouri, and establishing the compensation of the city clerk.
Thank you. So just a little bit of background, you likely know all of this already, but for the public's information. So Jessica, as you know, stepped to the plate about six months ago, I believe maybe a little over six months ago, when our former city clerk resigned, and has just done a tremendous job in the position. Her educational background, which is in accounting, also includes a master's degree, and it's a real honor to appoint her to this. And we also get to promote from within, which is good. So I would also ask, if the council is willing, so that she can begin her duties, that we have a second reading on this as well. We would need a motion that effect, made by Councilmember Remy, seconded by Councilmember Taylor. This will be a two-thirds vote. All in favor of the motion for second reading, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Motion for second reading carries. Ms. Sternlinger, please read Bill 2487.
Bill 2487, in ordinance appointing Jessica Sternlinger to the City, to the Office of City Clerk for the City of Wildwood, Missouri, and establishing the compensation of the city clerk.
Okay, thank you. Counselor McKeon?
I just have a question. I didn't know this would require an ordinance for her position. Can you explain why that is there, and also for the treasurer? I didn't understand it. Can you explain it?
City Attorney Young?
The reason we do these by ordinance is because their compensation has to be approved by ordinance, so doing it concurrently.
Thank you.
Counselor Werther?
Yeah, I'm sure some people are wondering why I voted no on the first reading, and I'll actually vote no on the second reading as well, when it comes down to a roll call vote. And it's nothing against Ms. Sternlinger, her qualifications or the work she's done. We, as a council, have just gone ahead and approved and hired a new city administrator. I think we should give that city administrator the ample opportunity to make any judgments with regards to personnel and personnel recommendations. Give him some time to go ahead and do that. Now, Ms. Sternlinger, if she has the same glowing reviews with Mr. Ansem as the mayor gave here, I'm more than happy to go ahead and go forward with the appointment. I just think we're getting this cart before the horse.
So thank you for that comment. Just for everyone's information, the city clerk does not report to the city administrator. Okay, so seeing no further questions or comments, roll call vote on final passage of Bill 2487.
Councilmember Dodwell?
Yes.
Councilmember Remy?
Yes.
Councilmember Edens?
Yes.
Councilmember Brost?
Yes.
Councilmember Garitano?
Yes.
Councilmember Werther?
Nay.
Councilmember Jordan?
Yes.
Councilmember McCutcheon?
Yes.
Councilmember Taylor?
Yes.
Councilmember Dillard?
Yes.
Oh, sorry. Council-
We have two Councilmembers.
Councilmember Bartoni?
Yes.
Councilmember Greg Noni?
Yes.
Councilmember Stevens?
Yes.
Councilmember McKeon?
Yes.
Councilmember Boe?
Yes.
Councilmember Bertolino?
Yes.
Okay, congratulations, Ms. Sternlinger. Welcome aboard. Okay, moving next to Bill 2488, is before the council for first reading, and it concerns all wards as well. Is there a motion for the first reading of the bill? Made by Councilmember Dodwell, seconded by Councilmember Garitano. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Opposed.
Okay, we have two opposed, Councilmember Werther and Councilmember McKeon. Any other opposed? Any abstentions? Ms. Sternlinger, please read Bill 2488.
Bill 2488, in ordinance appointing Stephen Cross to the Office of Treasurer of the City of Wildwood, Missouri, and establishing the compensation for the city treasurer.
Thank you. Just a little background for the public, and I'm sure the council is aware of this. So as you know, Steve has served for, who's sitting to my left here, has served many years as our treasurer and has done so quite well. He also agreed to step to the plate and help us when our former city administrator resigned, along with our Director of Planning, Joe Vunich. And I just want to say personally that they have done a tremendous job during this time without missing a beat. No complaints, as far as I know, by their performance. And as you may also recall, there was considerable discussion at the time Mr. Cross was appointed about, to the position of co-city administrator, because under the rules, our rules as a city, he could not also serve as an officer of city treasurer. So he agreed to resign, and there was discussion about whether the mayor would reappoint him. And I am very happy this evening to reappoint Steve Cross as the treasurer of our city. And I would also ask, given the action by the council on the other two bills relating to our personnel of these, of this nature, that, if council is willing, we have a second reading on this this evening as well, so Mr. Steve can immediately assume his obligations once again as our city treasurer. Made by Councilmember Bertolino, is there a second? Seconded by Councilmember Taylor. Any discussion on the motion for second reading? Seeing none, this will also be a two-thirds vote. All in favor of a second reading this evening, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Opposed.
Okay, we have four opposed, Councilmember Werther, Councilmember Jordan, Councilmember Dillard, and Councilmember McKeon. Any other opposed? Any abstentions? Seeing no further opposition or abstentions, the motion for second reading passes. Ms. Sternlinger, please read Bill 2488.
Bill 2488, in ordinance appointing Stephen Cross to the Office of Treasurer for the City of Wildwood, Missouri, and establishing the compensation for the city treasurer.
Okay. Any further discussion? I have nothing to add on the bill. Counselor Taylor?
Mr. Cross, thanks for your service as co-city interim administrator. I remember the whole controversy about your being reappointed, and I would, I'm glad to see this appointment being made, and I hope everyone who was here during that discussion would vote in favor of this motion. There was a lot said about not trusting the mayor to reappoint you, and I see that it has happened. I remember asking you whether you trusted the mayor, and you said you did. At that point, everyone, everyone was very concerned that you would return in your role as treasurer. You've done a stellar job. We had a report from our auditors about how there's never been an inconsistency. So I would just like to say, now's the time for the rubber to hit the road, and this is when it matters. We need to, we need to approve you and live up to our promises.
Okay, thank you. Any further discussion? Counselor McKeon?
I just want to comment on my opposition against the appointment, and it, and Mr. Cross, I think that you can relate to this, is the lack of professionalism that you and I have experienced as me being not on this council as a resident and now being on the council. So because of the lack of professionalism, that's why I had to have a no vote. That's all I want to say.
Any further discussion? Counselor McKeon, I'm sorry, Councilmember Remy?
I think the actions of Mr. Cross speak for themselves. We heard exactly like Mr. Taylor had said. The gentleman has done his job for a number of years, to the point that we had folks stand up here and say that this was an exceptional treasurer, and by that means there's no reason why we shouldn't reappoint him back to his position.
Counselor Werther?
Yeah, let me second the comments of Councilmember McKeon. The professionalism is of a grave concern. It was something very differently, to be, something much different to be seen once in the position of city, co-interim city administrator. This is a very different role from that. It's a concern over that professionalism for my no vote as well.
Counselor Garitano?
Yeah, I just would like to, as Chair of the Admin Public Works Committee, thank Steve Cross. He's been incredible to work with, and I've truly enjoyed him. I will miss him. I hope he will stay involved. Of course, he will be treasurer for our city, and as already is mentioned, the auditors have given us an outstanding report. So thank you, Steve Cross, for all the work you've done for us, for stepping in when the city needed you, and working with Joe Vunich to get, to keep us moving forward. So I'm gladly here to support reappointing- So I'm gladly here to support reappointing Steve to the treasurer role. Thank you.
Councilor Brost?
Yeah, I'd just like to add, as a CPA and sitting at a lot of meetings, it is uncommon to get a report to the degree that City of Wildwood received as to the performance of the staff and Steve, and it's, it should be commended, and it is unusual. So, and I, I can attest to that, so.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Seeing no further discussion, Ms. Sturmlinger, please call the roll for final passage of Bill 2488.
Councilmember Remy?
Yes.
Councilmember Edens?
Yes.
Councilmember Brost?
Yes.
Councilmember Garitano?
Yes.
Councilmember Werther?
Nay.
Councilmember Jordan?
I'm a little torn on my vote. I think, I'm a little concerned about feedback I heard about comments being made on social media about councilmembers. And I, I'm going to abstain, because I heard that secondhand, and I haven't seen it, but I hope that to the extent that that happened, that it will never be seen again.
Councilmember McCutcheon?
Yes.
Councilmember Taylor?
Yes.
Councilmember Dillard?
No.
Councilmember Bartoni?
Yes.
Councilmember Gagnani?
I painted myself in a corner, corner seven months ago, I'm going to say yes.
Councilmember Stevens?
Yes.
Councilmember McCune?
No.
Councilmember Boe?
Yes.
Councilmember Bertolino?
Yes.
Councilmember Dodwell?
Yes.
Okay, thank you, and congratulations, Mr. Cross. Okay, moving next to Bill 2489, it is before the council for first reading, and it concerns all wards. Is there a motion for the first reading of the bill? Councilmember Werther, seconded by councilmember Dodwell. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Ms. Sturmlinger, please read Bill 2489.
Bill 2489, an ordinance by the city council of the city of Wildwood, Missouri authorizing the mayor of the city of Wildwood, Missouri on behalf of the city of Wildwood, Missouri to execute and issue a purchase order to integrate facility services to provide and install the version 3.0 software upgrade and all related components, redesign the graphics, packaging, and remove all Java-related components.
Thank you. Mr. Cross, do you or Mr. Vunich, Mr. Cross, do you want to speak to this? And anything that the council has not?
I have nothing to add, Mr. Mayor, at this point, but I'm happy to answer any questions that anyone may have.
Councilmember McCune?
Is another microphone included in that? We're still waiting.
Councilmember McCune, that's a good question. That is a separate issue. Two microphones have been ordered. They were supposed to arrive on Friday. They were backordered, and we're expecting them hopefully this week.
Councilor Dodwell?
How confident are you that this change from Java is going to fix all the issues?
Councilmember Dodwell, there's, there's a couple of things. As spelled out in the, in the memorandum that was prepared, that's in your package, the city had the ability to control its own environment. And approximately 12 months ago, or perhaps a little bit longer, excuse me, that ability went away. And it, and it created two problems. Number one, the vendor that we use to monitor our HVAC system was no longer able to do so, and to be able to tell us proactively if we had a controls issue or if we had a mechanical issue. We have a separate mechanical contractor, and we didn't know what the problem might be. And then, secondly, we were unable to control our own environment. So you all have experienced, I'm sure, in various times, the temperature in this room at meetings was either very hot, the building has been extremely cold, the community room, same thing, and we really couldn't control that. Java, and, and I'm going to say right now, I am not a tech person, so you know a million times more than I do, but companies don't use Java any longer. It is, it is a very insecure, or unsecure system. So the, moving to HTML5, and I sound like I know what I'm talking about, but I really don't. But the, the interface then will allow us, or any member of the staff, to be able to go in and control set points and so forth. So, and it will also give the ability of our vendor to be able to monitor our systems and give us a heads-up, so to call, and, and this will now go to Sam instead of to Joe or I, to call him in the middle of the night and say, hey, Sam, the HVAC is broken, you need to get in there and get it fixed. So we're, we're very confident. And I've also had it looked at by another person, and actually got another bid, so pretty confident that this will.
So you feel confident that you won't be relying solely on an external provider to give you a reading or the ability to control temperatures within the building?
That's correct. We will no longer have to make a phone call and try to, them go into an old legacy system and try to figure out how to change that. We'll be able to do it ourselves.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, seeing no further discussion, the bill will be on the council's agenda for its next meeting. Moving to Bill 2490, it's before the council also for first reading, and it concerns all wards. Is there a motion for the first reading of Bill 2490? Made by councilmember Bartoni, seconded by councilmember McCutcheon, I believe. I see your hand, councilmember McCutcheon. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Ms. Sturmlinger, please read Bill 2490.
Bill 2490, an ordinance by the city council of the city of Wildwood, Missouri hereby authorizing the addition of a new subsection, subsection five, within chapter 415 of the city of Wildwood's Code of Ordinances, specifically chapter four point, art 415.380, subsection five, miscellaneous regulations which would address certain issues and concerns relating to hotels, motels, and similar types of uses, specifically regarding guest vehicles and the identification of them relative to parking and/or storage in conjunction with these activities, all being consistent with the action of the Planning and Zoning Commission dated June 3, 2019, in its letter of recommendation on this matter.
Thank you. Joe, anything you'd like to add relative to Bill 2490?
Yes, sir, Mr. Mayor. Mr. Mayor and members of city council, as you'll recall, a public hearing was held on this particular set of regulations at the end of June of this year. There were questions that were raised by city council members. The city attorney and the Department of Planning worked on those questions and issues and developed a revised set of regulations for consideration. The revised set of regulations was presented at the last meeting in July, and city council authorized the preparation of legislation, which is before you tonight. Both city attorney Young and I are available to answer any questions regarding the bill or respond to your comments. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilor Bartoni?
So, and I don't know if this, my questions or whatever need to wait till second reading, but this is, the police department is the one that's kind of asked for this originally, correct?
It's a combination, councilmember Bartoni. The Department of Planning is involved in the design layout and ultimately inspection of parking spaces, parking garages, et cetera, here in town center. We see a lot of the violations, so many times it's the Department of Planning asking the police department to assist it.
Okay, and to me, this is my, maybe my personal opinion, well, it is my personal opinion, this is like really close to like government stepping a little bit past where it needs to be. So how is this going to be enforced?
Again, the revised regulations, as prepared by the city attorney and the Department of Planning, recognized the Supreme Court decision relating to Los Angeles County. And in this particular instance, the enforcement is not the issuance of a summons per se, but during the business license renewal, a review of compliance or cooperation, and then a discussion at that time. So the idea here is twofold. One is to protect our parking. The theater has gotten much more popular over the years, and parking is a premium during its showtimes. Also, many of the restaurants have become more popular, and attendance at those by diners has increased. When we have an out-of-town vehicle that has a trailer that blocks six spaces, it does no one any good. The other component, which has not been identified as much, is the fact that if a car that belongs to a guest in the hotel is hit, damaged, broken into, there is no way the police can find out who that car belongs to. So it's a service to the guest as much as anything else as well.
Thank you. Okay, this will be on the council's agenda for its next meeting. Thank you, Joe.
Thank you, sir.
Moving to Bill 2491, it's also before the council for first reading, and it concerns Ward three. Is there a motion for the first reading of the bill? Made by councilmember Remy, seconded by councilmember Dillard. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Ms. Sturmlinger, please read, please read Bill 2491.
Bill 2491, an ordinance of the city council of the city of Wildwood, Missouri that approves an adjustment of certain common boundary lines between two lots of record, which are described as part of the northwest fourth, of the northwest fourth of section 26, township 45 north, range three east, city of Wildwood, St. Louis County, Missouri, and more specifically situated on the west side of state route 109 and its intersection with Old Etherington Road, thereby transferring an area of approximately one acre between the respective properties, thereby allowing the church's new water waste treatment facility to be placed on the tract of land where the use is currently located and will be known as the boundary adjustment plat of St. Paul's Lutheran Church.
Thank you. Joe, do you have anything you'd like to mention relative to the bill?
Good thing it was a long title, I was able to find my drawing. Mr. Mayor and members of the city council, Mr. St. Ange did a good job of explaining what is the premise or the reason for the requested boundary adjustment. It has to deal with wastewater treatment associated with the church facility. Code requires the wastewater treatment system to be on the same lot as the use, and that is the reason for the boundary adjustment. The new parcel B does have established and permanent access to it via a 15-foot wide easement that is shown on the plat itself. The department would note that Mr. St. Ange, representative of St. Paul's Lutheran Church, has respectfully requested a second reading tonight, and the department offers no objection.
Councilmember Remy?
With councilmember Dillard's permission, I'd like to co-motion that we move towards a second reading.
That's fine with me.
Okay, so we have a motion by councilmember Remy, seconded by councilmember Dillard for second reading. Any discussion on the motion? Seeing no discussion, all in favor of the motion for second reading, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Ms. Sturmlinger, please read Bill 2491.
Bill 2491, an ordinance of the city council of the city of Wildwood, Missouri that approves an adjustment of certain common boundary lines between two lots of record, which are described as part of the northwest fourth of the northwest fourth of section 26, township 45 north, range three east, city of Wildwood, St. Louis County, Missouri, and more specifically situated on the west side of state route 109 at its intersection with Old Etherington Road, thereby transferring an area of approximately one acre between the respective properties, thereby allowing the church's new wastewater, wastewater treatment facility to be placed on the tract of land where the use is currently located and will be known as the boundary adjustment plat of St. Paul's Lutheran Church.
Thank you. Joe, anything further?
If there are any other questions or comments, I'd be glad to try to address them at this time. Thank you.
Thank you. I don't see any. Ms. Sturmlinger, please call the roll for final passage of Bill 2491.
Councilmember Edens?
Yes.
Councilmember Brost?
Yes.
Councilmember Garitano?
Yes.
Councilmember Werther?
Aye.
Councilmember Jordan?
Yes.
Councilmember McCutcheon?
Yes.
Councilmember Taylor?
Yes.
Councilmember Dillard?
Yes.
Councilmember Bartoni?
Yes.
Councilmember Gagnani?
Yes.
Councilmember Stevens?
Yes.
Councilmember McCune?
Yes.
Councilmember Boe?
Yes.
Councilmember Bertolino?
Yes.
Councilmember Dodwell?
Yes.
Councilmember Remy?
Yes.
Bill passes. Moving back next to Bill 2492, it's before the council for first reading, and it concerns Ward six. Is there a motion for the first reading of the bill? Made by councilmember Jordan, seconded by councilmember Boe. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Ms. Sturmlinger, please read Bill 2492.
Bill 2492, an ordinance by the city council of the city of Wildwood, Missouri authorizing the mayor of the city of Wildwood, Missouri to enter into a contract with Burns &amp; Jones Construction, Inc., for the installation of an overflow parking lot at the Al Foster Memorial Trailhead, as indicated in the bid documents and specifications, all in keeping with the documentation submitted by such in response to the city's advertisement in this regard and the recommendation of Planning and Parks Committee of the city council regarding the project's components.
Thank you. Joe, anything you'd like to mention relative to Bill 2492?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Mr. Mayor and members of the city council, the Planning and Parks Committee of the city council did review this particular project, authorized the preparation of engineered plans and bid specifications, and then followed that with authorization to bid. The department received a number of bids. Burns &amp; Jones was the low bidder. That bid, along with the others, was presented to the Planning and Parks Committee. The Planning and Parks Committee submitted, selected Burns &amp; Jones Construction, Inc. As many of you know, if you've gone to the Al Foster Memorial Trailhead near the Merrimack River, it is a very popular place. That, in conjunction with the WFMP Narrow Gauge Railroad, on certain weekends makes parking a premium. So in this particular case, the Planning and Parks Committee is recommending the installation of 39 additional parking spaces. These spaces are at the same location as the original parking lot that was constructed when Al Foster Memorial Trail was first opened in 2007.
I think construction's going to take a long time, but...
Yes. A second reading is appreciated, but I think we've done enough of them tonight, at least from my perspective.
Well, just this, what I was saying is, to councilmember Jordan's request, I mean, this is a construction project, so as a practical matter, it's not going to be done probably this season, in any event, so.
Well, we're going to push very hard to get it done as quickly as we can.
I understand that. Okay. All right, it'll be on the council's agenda for its next meeting. Moving finally, first readings to Bill 2493. It concerns Wards four and seven. Is there a motion for the first reading of the bill? Made by councilmember Dodwell, seconded by councilmember McCune. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Opposed.
Show of hands for opposed, please. Councilmember Garitano is opposed, councilmember McCutcheon is opposed. Any other opposition? Any abstentions? Councilmember Edens, thank you. Any other abstentions? All right, Ms. Sturmlinger, please read Bill, the motion carries. Ms. Sturmlinger, please read Bill 2493.
Bill 2493, an ordinance by the city council of the city of Wildwood, Missouri authorizing the mayor of the city of Wildwood, Missouri on behalf of the city of Wildwood, Missouri to execute a consultant services agreement with Geotechnology, Inc., to complete geophysical surveys and geotechnical explorations as necessary to evaluate the stability and safety of Pier Side Lane as it is constructed on an earthen dam that forms the large water feature within the harbors at Lake Chesterfield subdivision.
Thank you, Joe. Anything further you'd like to mention relative to Bill 2493?
Mr. Mayor, with your permission, just a brief comment or two. Mr. Mayor and members of the city council, at the last city council meeting at the end of July, the members authorized the preparation of legislation for this purpose. The money will be funded through an escrow, originally provided by the developer of the harbors at Lake Chesterfield subdivision in the late 1980s. The remainder will come from the Department of Planning's operating budget. Therefore, funding is available, and the testing by Geotechnology, Inc. can begin once the bill is passed.
Thank you.
I still have some questions from last time we discussed this. Joe, I, I see that we're discussing this as a water feature in the last sentence. I've, I've heard this described both as a water feature. Question is, reservoir, wet and dry reservoir. A wet reservoir would be, if we, if we had this as a wet reservoir, it would be essentially a lake and a water feature. a lake and a water feature. Is that correct to say?
I think that's a layperson's term.
And that's what I am. So, dry reservoir, it can fill with water, but then empty out and be dry. And it would not therefore be a lake nor a water feature.
Correct.
Last time we discussed this, I was under the impression, and I may be wrong, that for the purposes of safety with the buses and cars going over the road, is it accurate, would I be correct in saying that the safety issue is there when we consider this as a wet reservoir, also known possibly or characterized as a lake or a water feature? That, I know there is a safety issue. Is there also a safety concern if we consider this as a dry reservoir, one that fills up and then drains? Because it sounded to me last time like it was yes, no, but I heard definitely it was really the safety issues occurred or was relevant when it was a wet reservoir, a lake or water feature. Are there also safety concerns right now as a dry reservoir?
What is your point of order, Councilmember McCune?
Are we debating the bill?
He asked a question and is not debating.
No, I'm not. I'm asking a question.
He asked a question. This is a time to ask questions. He's not debating.
No. I'm asking a question.
Thank you. Councilmember, I'm sorry. Mr. Edens, please respond to Councilmember Taylor's question.
I just got a demotion. From the department's perspective, whether it's wet or dry in terms of its stormwater management features, the lake has existed for 30-plus years. There's been stress on the earthen dam caused by that. And even if it were converted to a dry detention basin, the dam still needs to be there to collect the water. So, from a safety aspect, I think regardless of the function, it needs to be analyzed.
Okay.
Now, to set everyone's concerns, at least in the short-term side, Geotechnology, Inc. was asked to determine, is this like an emergency? Does the road need to be closed? In their response to Mr. Brown, our director of Public Works, is it's not a critical stage, but it does need further study.
Well, thank you for that answer. If it is, that is a point of clarification. That is a distinction with a difference, right? Because when I first heard this discussed, I heard that it was a safety issue and I might have been hearing wrong. It was a safety issue as a lake or as a wet retention basin. So, I expressed last time that I had concerns regarding using public funds for private.
So, Council...
But, yeah, I understand.
We have to debate at the second reading?
I understand.
Under ordinance 110.210A12.
I will just say this. I appreciate, I appreciate you disabusing myself of that notion regarding the safety issue.
Councilmember McCune?
So, I hope that everybody got to read this huge packet and obviously you guys know that I'm really diverse in the situation and I'm passionate about this for the residents themselves and for the safety. And we've heard some residents come at the last meeting about the safety concerns. So, I just want to bring to your attention, I know that there's a lot of debate and there's a lot of issues going on. I'm asking for the support. I'd ask Ms. McCutcheon, you were hot on the safety issue.
Point of order. Are we debating?
Yeah, that's...
I'm going, okay, I can ask a question?
Well, okay, so it's been read once.
Okay.
You can certainly ask questions, but getting into debating and asking support for positions, that should be reserved for the second reading.
So, can I ask why they oppose?
Let me finish if I may.
I'm sorry.
Thank you. Under ordinance 110.210A12. Go ahead.
Sure. So, can I ask why they oppose?
I think that would be best asked at the second reading.
Okay.
They may not be opposed to that point, actually.
Okay. I just wanted to clarify of the procedure, how we proceed. Anyway, back to what I want to say. I support this. I think it's obvious that we need to do this. The homeowners would like to have some answers. The homeowners have spent a lot of money, so all I'm asking is that we move this forward. I'm not going to ask for a second reading this evening.
Point of order. We're debating the merits.
I'm stating my...
Which?
My support.
Oh, okay.
My support of the bill. And I think that as far as the second reading, I'm not going to request that this evening so people can read the packet a little bit further and we proceed forward.
Thank you. Any further comment? Councilmember Brost?
A question. A question, Joe. The $58,000 relates to analyzing the road.
The dam where the road is located and the right-of-way area of the city.
Okay. Okay. Thank you.
You're welcome, sir.
Okay. Councilmember Dillard?
Yeah, I've got a question for either Joe or Rick. And I think some of maybe the confusion or miscommunication here with this watershed is that I think if I recall correctly, at the last meeting, we were asking about the safety issue and when it's a safety issue. And I think, and Rick, correct me if I'm wrong, I think your answer was it is a safety issue if it's a lake or if it's retaining water. But, in fact, it does retain water after a heavy rainfall, right?
That's correct. And that was my point that I was making is that it's a safety concern if it's retaining water and it does need to function as a stormwater control basin. It does not necessarily have to be a wet basin, but it's probably going to have to retain water to serve that function for stormwater control.
Right. But, I mean, my point is, well, if everything is dry and we get no rain, then there may or may not be a safety issue. But, if it is retaining water, as it does after heavy rainfall, then there is a safety issue present.
There's a safety issue that, yes, we feel needs to be investigated and the study will do that, yes.
Okay. Thank you.
Seeing no further questions or comments, it will be on the council's agenda for its next meeting. That completes the legislation bills and, of bills and so ordinances. And so, we now go into one resolution. Resolution 2019-29 is before the council and it concerns all wards. Is there a motion to adopt Resolution 2019-29? Made by Councilmember Remy, seconded by Councilmember Werther. Ms. Sturmleger, please read the resolution.
Resolution 2019-29, a resolution of the City of Wildwood, Missouri establishing a procedure to disclose potential conflicts of interest for certain municipal officials.
Steve, do you or City Attorney John, do you want to comment on this resolution so the Republican council know?
Yeah, this is required by state statute every two years. We're required to reaffirm the city's disclosure of conflict of interest ordinance so that we can continue to use the short form.
Okay. Required by state law. All right. Any discussion? All in favor of the motion to adopt Resolution 2019-29, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Resolution carries. Okay, moving into receipt and file, we have three items. Joe, first is PZ 10-19.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Mr. Mayor and members of the City Council, the Planning and Zoning Commission on August 5th of this year granted a conditional use permit for solar panels on the front-facing portion of a single-family dwelling. As required by the city's zoning ordinance, any conditional use permit granted by the Planning and Zoning Commission can be reviewed by the City Council within 15 days of your receipt of the letter of recommendation, which is today. Therefore, if there are any questions or a desire to review the Planning and Zoning Commission's action, that would have to occur in the next 15 days.
Okay. Thank you. Next is the recommendation report.
The...
I'm sorry. Councilmember Jordan?
Just to confirm, Joe, with respect to this item, this home is tucked away, so it's not a visible scenario.
It is, as much as I think a home that has front-facing solar panels associated with or to be associated with it, it is the least intrusive. The panels actually will be placed on a portion of the garage. The garage is actually what faces toward the street and the break in the tree line is just far the driveway itself. So, very limited impact, but our code is somewhat indifferent to the impact, whether it's front-facing toward a street.
Okay. I'd heard that this is kind of behind the vet and things like that, so it wasn't like front and center.
Certainly, I can email to all the City Council members and the mayor the photographs we had of the location before the 15-day period expires, if you'd like to see them.
Sure.
Thank you.
Okay. Next is the recommendation report, Joe.
Yes, the Planning and Zoning Commission at the same August 5th meeting approved the location of the Al Foster Memorial Trailhead overflow parking lot. And so, the report is being provided to you in support of tonight's bill with Burns &amp; Jones.
Thank you. Any questions for Joe on that? All right. Seeing none, third of the three items, the new bylaws for, amended bylaws for the Planning and Zoning Commission.
Planning and Zoning Commission requested that the City Council receive its new bylaws, so you're aware of what their operating parameters are over the course of the upcoming years and years to follow. It went from about six pages to 12 pages.
Thank you. Any questions on that? All right. Now, last under, or next to last under Ms. Edens, Councilmember Greg Nani.
Yes, sir. Thank you very much. I would like to bring up at this point a motion that the Board of Ethics proceed with hearing the complaints that have been filed relative to those issued by Mr. Smith regarding his complaints and that they be heard within 10 working days of this date. So, that gives them 10 working days to get a meeting together and have a Board of Ethics hearing.
Okay. So, it's seconded, I'm assuming by Councilmember Werther?
Yes.
Okay. City Attorney Young, do you have anything you'd like to say relative to the motion?
Well, two items. One is this item is not on the agenda as would be required by the Sunshine Law. The second is the city code provides that the Board of Ethics is empowered to conduct inquiries as it deems appropriate on any verbal or written inquiry or complaint filed. So, to demand that a hearing be conducted in a particular timeframe would be inconsistent with that city code provision.
Might I remind the city attorney that they've already violated their own rules?
So, Councilmember Greg Nani, just a moment. So, given the opinion from the city attorney, as chair, I'm going to rule the motion out of order because of both of those items. Councilmember Werther?
Yes. Residents of Wildwood just got shafted again. I wish, Mr. Smith, you could get to your hearing and get it in a timely fashion and that the city would follow its own rules. But, we're apparently a group of people who do as I say versus what I do.
So, Mr. Smith, please take your seat. And Mr. Werther, as you heard earlier, and have you been in?
And it will go to all of you and the Board of Ethics.
Mr. Smith, please, please, Mr. Smith. That's exactly why we have rules against what you just did. Councilmember Remy, I believe you wanted to speak to a couple of issues.
Yeah, I just have four items. I just wanted to mention if it's okay. The first one is, relates to Strecker Road. Just wanted to let folks know that the Strecker Road now is, bridge is up and running 17 days before it was supposed to be completed. I think that's outstanding first and foremost. Number two, I'd like to see at the next meeting, if possible, that we have a timeline that's with actionable items to get the women's bathroom up and running. I think we've talked about it for too long and I'm a man who doesn't understand it, but I've got a wife who does. And I think that we should get this fixed immediately. The third thing on my list is that I'm going to be making a resolution at the next meeting, which will, after speaking with city employees, will be regards to some of the summer meetings that we have as part of council. And then the final issue is, and I see Mr. Bricker here, and I'm hoping he's listening to what I'm going to say, and Ms. Wagner. We had a birthday party at Anniversary Park the other day with my children. It was fantastic. On Friday night, I attended the concert that our city employees set up here, one of the best-attended functions I've seen in the region. Our city employees not only should be congratulated, but I saw Mr. Stevens, I saw Mr. Garitano, Ms. Edens, Mr. Brost, I saw Mr. Bartoni, Mr. Taylor, Mr. Boe, and everybody shaking hands and getting along, the mayor, excuse me. This was a community event. Now, we've got a garden that Ms. Werther and other folks have done a brilliant job behind this building. We've got a barbecue bash coming up. We've got the celebration of Wildwood coming up. We've got an art festival coming up. And we just finally signed a highly talented administrator for the city. I would love it if the media would say how thriving and wonderful and positive a community this Wildwood is. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Garitano?
Thank you, Councilmember Remy, for your comments there. Completely agree with them. What I would like to speak to is that we will not have another council meeting until after Celebrate Wildwood on Saturday, August 24th. As the council liaises on with the Celebrate Wildwood Committee, I can only tell you that they have done an outstanding job planning for this event. And that is the committee made up of our citizen volunteers. We have also our outstanding city team that's been involved along with the Wildwood Police Department. Like Councilmember Remy said, this past event here where we had the concert, it was probably one of the best-attended I've ever seen. I mean, people were parking by deerbergs and walking all the way over. You couldn't find the parking space. So, I'm looking forward to the 24th. Let's pray that we get good weather for it, but it's going to be a great time. And for the council members, something that you'll notice that's different this year, and I might be the one you blame if you don't like the idea, is that we will not have convertibles. We are actually going to save the city some money and also be environmentally conscious because we're going to have electric golf carts that we'll be riding in. So, this is going to be an exceptional event, so if you don't like the golf carts, you can blame me for it. I'll take responsibility. But, that's all I want to say is put that 24th on your calendar and let's get everyone out there. Thank you.
Appreciate the remarks, just for information, I think the cars, at least in the last couple of years, were volunteered, so we didn't pay for those.
Couple of them had to be rented from Enterprise to address our dignitaries from the state of Missouri.
We'll have golf carts this year. All right. What did you, you wanted to mention something, Joe?
I'd be amiss if I did not mention that over the weekend with the cooperation of Fisher and Frictal and Consort Homes, Taylor Road Extension was opened between Route 100 and Route 109. The department would like to acknowledge the work of the Department of Public Works in helping get that accomplished as well as the patience of all the residents that ask about it for weeks on end. So, we opened a bridge and we opened a road in advance of start of school.
Good. Thank you. All right. Anything further? Seeing nothing further, I entertain a motion to adjourn. Made by Councilmember Werther, seconded by Councilmember Stevens, non-debatable. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? It will be adjourned. Thank you.